Gosh, I got jealous of the headphones.
I'm sure that makes it much easier.
Definitely, definitely.
Just gonna give it another couple minutes, minute or two. Okay. Let's see if we have a forum. You ready, Amy?
I'm ready.
All right, we have Amy Standard from Saratoga County, Craig Warner from Saratoga County, Opal Hens from Saratoga County, David Hogan Camp from Sinti County, Gary Hughes from Sinti County, Joe Grasso from Saratoga County, Jackie Stallone from Rensselaer County, Jim Shaughnessy from Rensselaer County, Judy Bussler from Rensselaer County, Larry Schillinger from Albany County, and folks who are joining us only by the phone. Is Kristin Swinton on? Kristin, are you here?
I'm here.
Kristin Swinton's here, Don Ackerman just joined from Sinti County. And Jason Kemper is joining from Saratoga County. With that, I think we have a quorum, right, Amy?
We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13 people, and at least two from each.
Great. Kristin, would you call the meeting to order, please?
Hey, I'd like to call the meeting to order.
Meeting's called order. The first item on the agenda is the January 15th meeting minutes. Would you like, would you like to call for a motion, Kristin, or do you want me to handle penalties?
However you want to do it, whatever is easiest. Could I have pushed in to approve the minutes from January 15th?
Judy.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Next is a financial statement through April 30th.
One thing, I even wrote notes, Kristin, and I apologize to you. We need a few corrections to the agenda. One is related to this, the financial, these two first, the agenda number two and agenda number three are actually in one combined memo. So the financial statements through April 30th and the pre audit financials, I'm sorry, three and four are in one memo, so memo 2004, there is no memo 2003. In addition, the change, the agenda that's proposed is to add a presentation by the Capitol District Transportation Committee on their new visions 2050 Regional Transportation Plan update. So I guess we would need the motion to amend the agenda to make that one correction and then to include the additional agenda item.
Okay, can we have a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Second, I'm sorry.
It was Larry.
Larry, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If it's carried.
Thank you. Barbara Morrow also just joined the meeting.
Okay.
And I wanted to also just take a moment to recognize a new member. And I'll stop sharing my screen, so if you all see him. David Hogan Camp is a new representative from Sinti County. Welcome to the commission, David.
Hi, buddy.
Project Director for Sinti Metroplex and also the Executive Director of the Capital Region Land Bank. So we're very lucky to have him join our, our group here. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, David.
Hopefully we'll see you in person next time.
That would be, that would be great. That would certainly be great. Nobody have to worry about getting kids put, put away for meetings like this.
That's why I came into the office today on a rare occasion to not do that. But welcome. So the next item on the agenda is the, is memo 2004, it's, it's the financial statements through April 30th and the pre audit financial statements. So I'll start with the pre audit financial statements since they are first covered in the memo. We are in the midst and actually finalizing the 2019 audit at this point. These pre audit financial statements were on the agenda in the canceled March meeting. They're presented here just so you can see the preliminary picture and then have a public record of whether or not there were any discrepancies between the pre audit financial statements and the final audit that's presented to the board, which will be in July. So the picture for 2019 is that we, our revenues were 103% to budget and expenses were at 96% to budget. The total operating surplus was about $82,000, bringing our unreserved fund balance up to $483,000. Any questions on the pre audit financial statements? Hearing none, I'll move on to the April 30th financial statements. Through April 30th, revenues are tracking at 36% to budget and expenses are tracking at 32% to budget. Par is 33, so we're a little tracking a little over on revenue and a little under on expenses. As noted on the balance sheet, we have $141,000 cash in hand in the bank, including the, the pass-through amounts for the Clean Energy Communities Program and the CB. We have outstanding receivables as of April 30th of just under $235,000. Any questions on the financial statements through April 30th? Kristin?
We have a motion to accept the pre audit financial statements and the financial statements through April 30th.
Come on.
Second?
Second.
Craig Warner?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And they're accepted. The strategic plan draft elements.
Great. Thanks, Kristin. Kristin is one of the members of our Strategic Planning Committee. In addition to Larry Kunder, Joe Grasso, Craig Warner, and Jackie Stallone. The committee has met several times since being formed last year and has come up with some, some recommendations for new strategic initiatives for 2020 and beyond. The committee has not contemplated the current crisis and how that could potentially change the outlook. I think regardless of the current crisis, the new recommended focus that the committee is making were strategic initiatives that would be our focus for the next coming years is as good, is a good one. So as you recall, our last strategic plan was developed in 2015 and adopted in 2016. And the proposition here is to recognize the work that was done in that strategic planning process. The committee felt that the previous SWOT analysis was still valid and the task here was really just to refocus the energy of the commission to new tasks that would still help advance the commission's goals and be a little bit more strategic in our, our approach, so. The draft 2020 strategic initiatives are presented in memo 20-5. They include, one, enhance communications and outreach to promote the role and value of the commission through a broad cross-section of stakeholders and public and private organizations and continue to explore opportunities to expand regional partnerships. Does anybody want me to share my screen so you can, we can all see the same stuff? Would that be helpful?
Yes, it would be.
Yes.
Okay. The second strategic initiative is to continue to provide and seek opportunities for facilitation and project management contracts that increase the role of CDRPC in supporting local, intermunicipal, and regional collaboration initiatives. The third one is work to develop a regional conversation about growth and development patterns and facilitate a collaborative framework to address current and future challenges that balance economic growth, environmental protection, and social equity. And the fourth is identify ways to increase financial stability consistent with the mission of the commission in concert with the goals and objectives of the member counties. So these four strategic initiatives are, were developed by the committee and presented to the board for comment. Our original plan was to have the comment period of the full board be one, one span between one board meeting and the next. So the, the comment period for the full board to weigh in would be, we would reconvene on this topic at our July 15th meeting. I wanted to just mention the 2015 strategic initiatives just to demonstrate how they've, how they've, they've changed. So initially, a couple of the 2015 strategic initiatives focused on things that had already been done. So we had developed a communications and outreach plan. Obviously, the goal of continued communication outreach is a priority in the new set of strategic initiatives. Number two remains similar to what it was in the 2015 plan, again, really focusing on CDRPC being entrepreneurial. Number three is something that has largely been completed and thankfully so, or otherwise CDRPC would not be able to work remotely as we have been so successfully. And number four, implement leadership succession planning. Succession planning is, is always, you know, something to consider, but the committee felt that, that that is not necessarily the, the focus of the priorities for the, this next term. Any members of the committee want to say anything about their work or the new strategic initiatives? The silence is a ringing endorsement from the committee. Any CDRPC commissioners have any thoughts? Hearing none, again, they're presented for your consideration for action pending at the July 15th meeting. With that?
Okay, we'll move to capital region indicators.
So capital region indicators, the website was launched in late January. We had great hopes for doing a variety of in-person presentations. This project was a great example of partnerships between the Capital Region Chamber, the Capitol District Transportation Committee, the Community Foundation of the Greater Capital District, and others, University of Albany and their avail lab to develop this robust platform that features more than 50 data points and indicators for each municipality in the capital region. And again, this is intended to be able to be a tool that would help communities track and understand change over time in their communities. It is something that we are continuing to build upon and we're looking to use as a foundation for a variety of projects. We have posted a webinar on our YouTube channel of a training that we conducted in early February. And, you know, again, we really hope that this is going to be a tool that's, that's going to be used by a variety of organizations and make it easier for folks to find the information they need to apply for grant applications or do other things, again, to provide a better understanding of their communities. All the visualizations in, in the tool are, and I just want to confirm, you can see, you can see the indicators website on your screens?
We're still seeing the meeting packet. It might be on your other screen.
There it is.
So more than 50 indicators, we hope this is going to be used by, you know, communities. It has robust tools to be able to compare years, census data, compare geography, city of Albany to the Village of Altamont, for example, so, and all the visualizations that you see here, you can download, you can embed, you can save the image. If you're doing reports or grant applications, these tools, we hope, you know, will be really helpful. Enable to track change, you can see these hero statistics, whether an indicator is increasing or decreasing and whether that is good or bad is also easily digestible for folks that use the website. You know, again, we had a successful launch in late January and we're on board with training in early February. We have had commitments from the Community Foundation and the Capital Region Chamber to continue to invest in this in 2020 to approach Phase Two work, which includes bringing in education and school district data, working in partnership with Capital Region BOCs and bringing in more robust health data. It's called the CHIRIs data that's hosted by the Department of Health. And those two projects, we had initially considered as the next priorities for this plan. We are in initial conversations with our fellow regional planning councils across the state to see how this platform can be used as a statewide dashboard for regional planning councils. In addition, we are implementing their conversations with the other regional planning councils about how this platform could be leveraged as a dashboard to track the recovery effort of the COVID-19 crisis to better provide sort of real-time information on industry sector recovery and impacts. So that's still very much preliminary conversations and a work in progress, but discussions are happening about how to leverage this, this tool and the investments that we've already made to be more relevant to the recovery efforts for COVID-19.
Hey Mark?
Yes?
It's a great tool. I'm on it often and it's just incredible amount of data. Thank you very much. It's great.
Thank you.
Encourage everybody to get on it and use it.
Now I go back to sharing my, sharing the agenda.
I will go on to the nicer to grant application update.
Yes, so we, Todd has been working diligently on developing the new application for the Clean Energy Communities Program. The, the grant applica, the grant opportunity was announced, I believe in, in May or April. Time during this crisis is sort of blending together, but the bottom line is it's due June 11th. And Todd has been doing the hard work of coordinating the partners, putting it in the budgets and doing the detailed work to put the strongest proposal possible together for the next iteration of the Clean Energy Communities Program. Todd's program that he developed initially, you know, has been a great success and viewed very positively by nicer to leadership and others that work on the program. They've incorporated best practices into the new proposal and are continuing to work with the lion's share of the partners that we worked with that were involved in, in the initial proposal. Again, CDRPC in this proposal would manage a territory roughly half the state covering the Hudson Valley, the Adirondacks, the Mohawk Valley, and the Capital District region. The new grant proposal, you know, is, is basically for $5.3 million over five and a half years. And this again is CDRPC serving as a primary contractor with subcontract, subcontracted relationships with the other entities. The potential revenue for CDRPC under the contract is about $340,000 a year. This time, there is no official match requirement, which is a great thing. 25% match on $5.3 million or $340,000 is the, is, it can be a bit of a burden, particularly in these challenging times. We are, however, proposing a 10% match, which we were anticipating to achieve through in-kind administrative contributions. So that's pretty self-explanatory. The administrative contributions to run the program and minister the relationship with the subcontractors, subcontractor payments, et cetera. The structure and the core structure in our region, Todd Fubozzi being the primary project director, coordinating all of our regional partners to deploy the program and then our outreach coordinators in the Greater Capital District region, Tara DiNatio and Jill Hank are anticipated to continue as the outreach coordinators under the new proposal. The board already approved this application back in July. This is how timings for these grant programs sometimes work, so I don't, I'm not, we don't need any additional board approval for this for this application. And the board, again, will be asked to accept the, approve the contract once it's issued. We have high hopes that this will be approved after the application is submitted. Todd, anything else briefly to add?
No, just that we're looking forward to claiming this again. We think we have a great, we're positioned very well to, to get it since we were the, were, were the incumbent and we're following the same kind of a shared services proposal and we're in a position as we were previously to bring in a fair amount of local resources to the counties and the local communities. We, we figured we brought in about $3 million in grants and labor to help the local communities the first time around and we're hoping to bring in a comparable amount this time around. We, the new second phase of this program hasn't been announced in terms of what grant rewards will be available, but we're, we've got some insights that it's going to be in the millions and so communities will be able to go through a series of actions that we will assist them with. Energy efficiency actions primarily and some sustainability actions. And once they hit the milestones of the program, will be qualified for match-free project grant funding in which we help them put a proposal together. So it's an opportunity to bring a lot of state resources to the localities and especially with COVID. We feel this is a particularly great time to be able to do that.
That's a great point, Todd. It's not just about the resources that, you know, CDRPC or our partners will have to deploy the program. The other important layer is the additional financial incentives that we can fill for our counties and to the communities within them. I think the good thing about the Clean Energy Communities Program is that it's, it's funded through the Regi Program, the Regional Greenhouse Program, funded by taxpayers, not by taxpayers. So amid the current financial crisis of the state, the program funding for this program is insulated. Any questions on the proposal? Hearing none, we'll move on to the budget amendment. The budget amendment is submitted here to reflect new realities and just making some adjustments to the budget. Overall, this modification increases revenue projections by 8,000 and decreases expenses by just under $4,000. On the revenue side, we are, we have received, and so we're, we're amending the, the budget here for 2020, $15,000 in the Capital Region Chamber. Again, for 2020 work on the capital indicators.org website. We also, our workshop revenue is projected to be decreased with the reduction in live event ticket sales for our workshop and I don't anticipate having live workshops for the remainder of 2020. And, you know, we've been, I think, very successful and I thank Martin and the CDRPC team for quickly pivoting to a webinar series. We've also learned that a number of our sponsors are, you know, see the value proposition to be a sponsor of a webinar versus having a table at our live webinars, I'm sorry, live workshops. So we've been able to convert some of those, the sponsorships for our in-person workshops, sponsorships for webinars. And we anticipate that that trend will continue as we would entertain a fall workshop series potentially as well, which is why the revenue side is not decreased to zero. There's still opportunity we see to create some sponsorship revenue for the webinars. Expenses adjustments have been proposed in the salary line. The original budget anticipated six months for Jill and Tara's engagement with the Clean Energy Communities Program. With the new announcement of the funding opportunity, we are again having to bridge a little bit of a gap in funding. This budget amendment is a conservative estimate. I think the reality is closer to maybe a one month of salary for Tara and Jill. The budget amendment includes two months of salary for Tara and Jill. In addition, the program managers, Martin, Kate, and Todd and myself have been working to develop a plan to reallocate their hours within existing other programs, including the Economic Development Agency Program and in particular technical assistance related to our technical assistance program work. That is the subject of some other, another agenda item later on. Workshop expenses are also cut to reflect not having to pay for venues and catering and other expenses related to in-person remainder of 2020. Registrations have also been caught in anticipation of not having to pay $10,000 in sponsorships that was, was grant funded through the Clean Energy Communities Program for folks to attend a live conference that had been scheduled. Travel is also reduced to reflect staff not going out to communities as often as possible and also staff not attending other events that would require travel. Any questions on these budget amendments?
Could we have a motion to approve the 2020 budget amendment? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the amendment's approved. Next is the EDA grant authorization.
So yes, this is a very interesting opportunity for the Regional Planning Council. As you know, that CDRPC is the designated economic development district for the purposes of the Economic Development Administration at the federal level. The EDA has been allocated $1.5 billion in CARES Act funding of which just under $260 million has been allocated to the Northeast Region states. There's two buckets to the CARES Act funding that the EDA is disseminating. One is a non-competitive portion and then the other is a competitive portion. CDRPC being a designated economic development district is eligible for a non-competitive grant up to $400,000 for our work to assist in recovery efforts for the COVID-19 crisis. This non-competitive opportunity is, does not require a match. However, the turnaround time is extremely quick. Applications are due June 6th. I am in the process right now of reviewing this opportunity with our county stakeholders first. And we're also reaching out to economic development organizations in the region to ensure that our, the investments that we make with this $400,000 are going to be the most helpful to our counties and to the economic development landscape in the capital region as we recover. The four project categories that we can work on are the development of an economic recovery and resilience, resiliency plan, two, the development, deployment of disaster recovery coordinators to orchestrate the region's response to the pandemic, three, provision of technical assistance to local governments and other stakeholders, enhancing kind of the work that we already do. And four, funding of appropriate technology and staff to support these pandemic response activities. So I do not have a proposal written for you because I'm still in the midst of working our county stakeholders and others to distill project categories and ideas that will be the most meaningful. I am prepared to discuss sort of a larger framework of what I'm thinking at this point after about a week and a half of these discussions with some stakeholders and other groups. So there is, does seem to be a general interest in the idea of a coordinated economic development, economic recovery and resiliency plan. What remains to be seen is what other opportunities there are. Whether or not there would be an opportunity to leverage perhaps core funding through this program with other dollars to create a regional economic development plan. You know, perhaps partnering with Center for Economic Growth, the Capital Region Chamber. So those kind of things are still in discussions. Disaster recovery coordinators, you know, again, Kate attended a webinar for media yesterday and they stressed the flexibility of this aspect of it. So my thinking is, you know, is it going to be more efficient for CDRPC to onboard staff and then try to serve the whole region? Or can we partner with organizations that already have some staff or are planning to, you know, can we work with others, whether it's county, whether it's, you know, economic development organizations to share staff? Use some of this money to pool resources to make sure that we have people on the ground in the region that are going to be well versed on recovery, funding opportunities and other things. So those are kind of the things that we're discussing with the stakeholders. The technical assistance aspect of it, certainly this piece is really just going to amplify, you know, the kinds of things that we can do in terms of data analysis and other assistance to local governments, to economic development organizations and, and businesses potentially. So thinking about how we make these investments in coordination with the disaster recovery coordinators. in coordination with the disaster recovery coordinators, and then also in terms of our staff here to be able to make sure that they have the tools that they need to do the kinds of work that would be most helpful for the recovery. And then the fourth piece is a technology. So I mentioned our regional indicators dashboard. There is some interest among other regional planning councils, like I mentioned, to leverage that as an opportunity partially funded through this program to build out sort of a state that tracks recovery in our economic development regions. There's also some interest among the University of Albany and and other groups, obviously, you know, taking it, taking our lead and the information from whatever the the regional control room members say that they they need. But we're really viewing this as sort of the recovery work as opposed to the reopening work, sort of technology investment. So that's what I'm thinking now. Given the timing, I'm requesting authorization from the board to apply for this $400,000 in match refunding without a formal proposal. So I just wanted to share with you what I'm thinking and then respectfully request your authorization to apply for the funding.
Hey, Mark?
Yes.
It's Joe Grass. So the the funding can be used both for internal as well as pass through?
Yes, with the detail, the devil's always in the details. So what I don't know is, one, whether or not our existing relationships, for example, with the counties would facilitate a federal pass through, whether we would need to execute either cooperative agreements for federal money or intermunicipal agreements to govern this. If you were going to do sort of subcontractors, I've had conversations with some private companies about the prospect of engaging professional rent renters under this opportunity. That would need to be an RFP controlled process. So my instinct, my instinct is, can we look at the landscape of organizations that we can do intermunicipal agreements with, or we can do other cooperative agreements with to hire, to get the people on the ground in the regions to provide services. But again, it's still, it's still a work in progress in terms of what the opportunities are. I still need to circle back with EDA and ask them, you know, what's an acceptable structure in terms of the pass through arrangement? In my experience with federal money, cooperative agreements with other partner organizations have worked. The devil's always in the details. This is an agency that I had not. I've I've done cooperative agreements with Department of Interior money, but never with money from the EDA. So they have different people, you know, creating different rules, but I just need to figure that out. So I'm looking at that. I don't I don't have an answer for you yet.
Yep, thank you.
Mark, can I ask you a question? This is Barbara.
Yes.
Is there any connection between this and like the nitty gritty, you know, guidelines that businesses need as they try to reopen? I know you, we were saying this doesn't have to do with the reopening, but is there any connection? Like, how are the businesses going to get the this really, you know, nitty gritty, concrete details that they need in order to, you know, reopen in a safe and legal way?
Right.
Because that's like the recovery. I mean, in a sense, you have planning on a large scale, but you also have this very detailed stuff.
Well, one of the things that I know the counties are working very hard on and other folks is providing the guidance to businesses. I frankly don't have a good picture of what that work looks like. If I start hearing it from the stakeholders to say that we need some of this help, we can, you know, shift our application. The issue is going to be timing. Because, you know, while they, while we have an application deadline of June 6th, I don't know when this funding will be awarded or when contracts will be in place. And, you know, if that is going to take another two months, I mean, the help on the ground for businesses to reopen in phase one or phase two is probably needed within, hopefully, within the next few weeks or the next month or so. So, I mean, it's it's all, there's, it's all, there are a lot of different moving parts. And if that becomes part of this program, we can certainly include it.
Okay.
Mark, I'd just add that I really do like your approach of working with local partners for the, you know, tying tying together local partners and maybe using them, you know, as businesses are going to be getting started in the next few months. Local municipalities, you know, that it's the results of the sales tax decline will be lagging, and the more we can keep local staff involved in the recovery efforts and funded to be able to do that with with your team, I think the better. So good job.
Thanks. You get you get the gold star, a new member coming in. Saying things positive. All right. Another piece of this, which is not, and I will mention it here, this is outside of this 40,000. Other organizations that are eligible for non-competitive money are organizations that run EDA-funded revolving loan funds. So currently in the capital district, the Capital Region Chamber operates an EDA revolving loan fund. That fund is restricted to Albany County. We have been working with Mark Egan at the Chamber and the EDA. And Mark has been in conversations with folks from Albany County. And it looks like we have, we will have a pending application to expand the service area of that revolving loan fund to include the remainder of the three counties and capitalize that effort with an additional up to $10 million of funding that can be lent out at 0% for to assist businesses in recovery efforts. So you just want to recognize the Capital Region Chamber, and in particular Albany County's openness to be a regional partner to ensure that these additional federal resources can be deployed in Schenectady and Saratoga and Rensselaer Counties. So again, that's in still in discussion, and it looks like we will be able to have an application to access that additional capitalized revolving loan fund.
Okay, so could we have a motion to allow the staff to submit an application to the EDA?
So moved. Second?
Second.
I'll second. Barbara.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And then it's approved. Next is the 2020 Technical Assistance Program project.
This is the third iteration of our technical assistance program funded in part by the Capital District Transportation Committee. And in part, and executed in partnership with them. The goals of this program are really to engage communities to enhance their capacity to complete relatively small scale projects in the hope that completing the small scale project will result in 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 larger, more significant projects down the line. We're also trying to engage and connect with quote unquote low capacity communities, communities that don't have planning staffs, that don't have a lot of capacity. That piece is still a work in progress. We have, you know, engaged one community that I think would fall in that bucket this time. But we're still looking for new opportunities. In addition, given the current COVID-19 crisis, these applications were due in April or May 1st. Yes, May 1st. And we are considering working with CDTC to announce a second round of applications in the late summer or fall to capture communities that at that point hopefully are not scrambling as much to take advantage of this program. The four projects that would be funded through this program and funded really means staff time of CTC and CDRPC. First one is the town of Clifton Park. This is for the Western Clifton Park Development and Conservation Trends Analysis. So this is part of the update of the 2005 Western Clifton Park Generic Environmental Impact Statement and Land Conservation Plan. That's been in place for 15 years. Some growth and development, different things have happened with conservation and other things. And the town staff really wants to get a picture of of those trends to feed next phase of development of the the new generic environmental impact statement for the area. Total CDRPC budget is $6,000 in staff time, total project value matches about $18,000. Next one is the Green Bush. This is Logan Road Complete Streets Enhancement Project. This is primarily going to be CTC staff working with them on some complete streets work and some specific corridor planning related to Gilligan Road. CDRPC effort over $2,000. The total project value with the with the robust local match is just under $14,000. Next one is the town of Glenville. They recently adopted their comprehensive plan, and they're implementing incrementally zoning code updates. So this will focus in on an area around Route 50 in Glenville. And staff for CTC and CDRPC will be examining their comprehensive plan, doing a zoning code audit and making some other recommendations that will focus on future growth and development in that Route 50 corridor area. And the last one is the town of Westerlo, the Westerlo Comprehensive Plan Committee. The town has a volunteer comprehensive plan committee, and as folks familiar with working with small towns that don't have a lot of capacity. So CDRPC will be providing the town with the bulk of existing conditions analysis, demographic analysis, basemapping, all the things that will lay the foundation for successful comprehensive plan effort. And this will hopefully allow the the community to spend its money on a consultant that they have engaged for some of the more technical tasks of writing the comprehensive plan of education steps and other things. So this is an example, you know, hopefully of how this program is intended to help those low capacity communities get the work done related to planning. So $76,000 budget for CDRPC's effort, total project budget of about $10,000. Any questions on the technical assistance program or comments?
Okay, could we have a motion to endorse the project that Mark just outlined?
Joe and Amy?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Okay, then we'll move on to the staff report.
All right, staff report. Well, I just wanted to thank the CDRPC staff. They have been doing a great job, and everyone has really stepped up as as with all of our organizations to rise to the occasion. And everyone's been working remotely successfully. I think the investments that we made in in technology early has have really helped in that regard. All of us, and I'm sure it's not unique to CDRPC staff, have to balance work-life demands in a very unique and challenging circumstance at home. Particularly for those of us with children and spouses who have jobs. So I definitely appreciate everyone's work on this. I think we've been able to really get the necessary work done and continue to advance, you know, what CDRPC's mission is remotely. A great example of that is our webinar series, which we launched on the 30th. We had a very compelling conversation and presentation organized by Kate Maynard about economic recovery in the capital region, bringing together folks from Rockefeller College and economic development organizations and the Small Business Administration. And we really want to continue that conversation about regional recovery efforts and and what the impacts are to regional planning. And also, you know, our bread and butter supply planning and zoning board credits to our local members. So again, you know, thank you to CDRPC staff. Thank you to Martin Daly. He really took the took the reins on executing the details of how these webinars would work. We have webinars planned out through the middle of June, and we expect those to continue throughout the summer. Thursdays at 10:00. Mark your calendars, participate. You don't have to be on video. You don't have to say anything. You can just watch. Want to make it super easy for everyone. But the other details of our work basically since the end of last year included in the staff report. And with that, Kristin, I think we have Jen Suponis here with us for the presentation. If if you agree to to shift to that presentation now?
Absolutely.
Okay. Let me stop showing my screen.
Hi.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me introduce Jen. So Jen, Jen is is the better half of Martin Daly who was on our staff. Jen is upstairs and Martin is downstairs in the basement. I think that is a very good example of how to make a marriage work. Jen is the senior transportation planner for the Capital District Transportation Committee. The transportation committee, it's in the midst of its latest update to its regional transportation plan. The new plan is called, will be called New Visions 2050. It's a comprehensive examination of the region's transportation needs and an examination of where the region, where the region's needs will be in the future. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jen for an outline of the update.
Sure. Do you need me to share my screen?
If you'd like to.
Sure, I can do that. Hopefully this works. Okay. Can everyone see it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in, it's in preview mode.
Um, even now?
Yes.
Oh. Um.
Do you have two screens?
I do.
If you bring it over to the screen that you're perhaps that is the other screen. Or just unplug the other monitor.
Can you see it now?
We can still see the preview, the preview mode, like before you would start the presentation. In, yes, there you go.
Okay, sorry about that. So as Mark said, I just wanted to give a brief update on this, on CDT's new visions plan. This is the regional transportation plan for the capital district. It's a 30-year plan that outlines our investment principles and planning strategies that will guide the region towards developing our next generation transportation network. It really lays the groundwork for how we invest federal transportation funds in the region. And all of the principles and philosophies that kind of are embedded in this plan dictate everything else that we do, how we, like I said, how we program money on capital projects, but then also which planning tasks we fund at CDT. And everything in the plan is complements or is consistent with national goals. And also, we've tried to capture all regional priorities. The plan consists of several parts. There's an executive summary. It's about 60 pages, but it really outlines the the details in the plan. It provides a lot of infographics to make it kind of easier to to follow. It doesn't get into the weeds on too many topics. That information, kind of the details of different modes, different programs can be found in our system performance report and our technical area papers. There's also a public participation plan, which I'll talk about briefly in a moment. A financial plan, how are we going to afford these investments? What happens if funding increases, decreases? We have that all laid out. And then, of course, because we're planners and we love acronyms, we have a glossary of terms and abbreviations. So we released the plan to the public March 5th, and shortly after New York State on Pause was implemented. So we had to quickly kind of pivot in how we engage with the public. We had a lot of in-person and public meetings scheduled, and that was really how we wanted to do a bulk of our outreach. So every, we have created a webpage, cdtcnpo.org/ envy2050. And on that page right now, you can find all of the materials and documents related to the plan. We also have surveys. We have an interactive poll. You can get on an email list. We also have what we're calling a meeting in a box materials. So if you want to have your own new visions meeting with your your Zoom happy hour on Friday, you can do that. We provide guidance on how to do it. If you're, you know, we hope that eventually people will be able to have small group gatherings, perhaps late summer or fall and can have smaller meetings in person if they feel comfortable doing so. But we really are moving a lot to virtual right now. We're on social media, so you can find us on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. We'll be posting opportunities for people to get involved, to share photos with us, to just share their thoughts, to take live polls. You can still request printed materials if you do not have access to, if you would like a paper copy and you don't have access to a printer or you just don't have internet access. And we've also set up a new visions hotline. So we plan on promoting this to to folks who may not have a have reliable internet access. Also, since most of our staff is teleworking, this is a phone number that is basically lives online and transcribes comments, and we don't have to be in the office to 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 pick up calls. So we have set that up, and that's at the bottom of the page, and we're also accepting email comments. So like I said, we released this in March for public comment, and we had planned on doing two distinct phases of outreach. But we've decided But we've decided to just do continuous public outreach now until September. So, if you are interested in having CDT do a virtual presentation at a town meeting or any other community meeting, please get in touch. I'd be happy to coordinate that with you. If you have any questions about public outreach or how to reach a particular group that you think would be interested in providing comments that is most impacted by changes to the transportation system, please, you can get in touch at the newvisions@ctcnpo.org email address. So, Mark, I think that's it.
Great, thanks so much, Jen. Very informative. Again, if you have any questions about the plan, reach out to Jen. Any comments on it, please do the same. It's a, it's really an impressive document that guys, you know, not only planning in the capital region, but future investments in transportation. And CTC, you know, bringing together stakeholders from the counties, from local governments to really decide where capital, where federal funding is used in capital projects and roadway and bridge construction. Their, their committee makes it, and they really look at the, the regional transportation plan as their, as their guidebook when they make those decisions. So, very impressive and important document for the region. I encourage you all to check it out. Thank you very much, Jen. And thank you also to Mike Francini for repeatedly asking me for time on our agenda. And I apologize for getting to do that on this agenda as I promised to do. So, this other business, I wanted to just emphasize to the board members, I guess, the obvious thing that everyone knows, it's going to be a very challenging county budget year. I'm in the process of developing our annual report to hopefully give you all and our partners really compelling talking points when we advocate for continued funding for the commission through 2021. I think, as you've seen on today's board meeting, you know, we're continuing to bring federal resources and other resources to the table, state grant funding and other resources that are going to help in the recovery. And this year, unlike any other, I'll be leaning more heavily on our commissioners to help me make the case to the counties of the value of CDRPC and the work that we do. So, be prepared for me to reach out to you, to ask you to participate in that effort. Any comments or any other thoughts? With that, I think we're, we're all good. Kristin?
Okay, then our next meeting is going to be July 15th at 10:00 a.m. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good to see everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Stay healthy.